Shreveport City Council will now be called to order. The Chair recognizes Mr. Will Bradford for invocation and will ask Councilman Oliver Jenkins to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Father God, thank you for another day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Shreveport. Thank you for those citizens gathered here today. Please continue to bless our government, our mayor, our city council, and all those who worked every day to serve the people of this great city, to be better and to be more pleasing in your sight. As we go to today's meeting, please allow us to make great decisions, decisions that benefit all involved, and please continue to guide us and keep our hands. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in a pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance, the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor.
Present.
Counselor.
Here.
Present.
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 Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
There is, Mr. Chair.
Second? Okay, the Chair hears a motion by Councilman Corbin and a second by Councilman Bradford. Is there any discussion? Please vote. And the votes pass. Does any council member at this time have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests? The Chair sees none, we will ask Mayor Ollie Spearman Tyler now will be recognized to give us awards, recognitions, and distinguished guests. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to members of the council. We have two or three announcements and then we have one guest we'd like to recognize today. Our first announcement, I want to thank everyone who came down to Riverview Park for our second annual Shreveport Spirit of the Season Holiday Celebration and Rockets Over the Red event. I know that I saw Councilman Efferson there, so thank you so much for coming to participate. We flipped the switch on our 40-foot tree and some other lighting along the riverfront on November 21st, and the sky lit up with an awesome firework on November 25th. These were both memorable events. We will have events in the Red River District each weekend leading up to Christmas, and we'll also have movies at Riverview Park each Friday leading up to Christmas. So we're asking that our citizens and their families to please come down and enjoy the festivities. Last week we kicked off our 2018 Paint Your Heart Out Celebration. Organizations that would like to volunteer to paint or become a sponsor should call the Department of Community Development's Bureau of Housing and Business Development at 673-7503, or Ms. Marshall Nelson, Program Coordinator, 673-7528, to apply. Councilmembers, I sent out an email today earlier. However, I'd like to remind you that the Public Works Department is conducting a demonstration using the infrared truck on Thursday, November 30th, 2017, at 10:00 a.m. at 825 Oakley Street. That's the correction I did send to you. You're invited to attend this demonstration. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events. Since we met last, the city has supported several events, including, of course, Spirit of the Season, Rockets Over the Red, Small Business Saturday, and the Red River District. And these are just a few of the various events that we had. We had the Warriors Network, we had Louisiana Federation of Teachers Convention, and the list goes on. So we're so thankful that we have so many wonderful events here in our city, and so many different kinds of family-friendly festivities for people to attend. I'd like to now bring up Mr. Fred Phillips, who was honored by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Shreveport Airport Authority for 50 years of flying. I have a proclamation that I'd like to read and present him with, so, Mr. Chair, if you will, please join me.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
The proclamation reads, whereas Mr. Fred L. Phillips is President and Chief Executive Officer of Phillips Energy Incorporated, and has over 40 years' experience in the oil and gas industry, and whereas Mr. Fred received his Bachelor of Science degree from the University of Colorado in 1969, and a Master's Degree in Business Administration from Tulane University in 1972, and whereas, over the years, Mr. Phillips has been a board member of many civic and business organizations. He's currently a board member of Aeropress Corporation, American Red Cross Northwest Louisiana Chapter, Southfield School Foundation Board, the Betty and Leonard Phillips Def Action Center, and several family-owned entities. And whereas, he is a Tiffany Circle recipient for his level of giving to the American Red Cross. In addition, he is the Vice President of the Leonard W. and Betty Phillips Foundation, where he continues the family's philanthropic legacy. And whereas, Mr. Phillips is an avid aviation enthusiast, having owned and operated PetroLift Aviation Services, Inc., an aircraft charter company, and Movie Choppers of Louisiana, LLC, a helicopter charter company. He has a lot of activities. As an accomplished pilot, he has 50 years of flying experience and has logged over 18,000 hours of pilot in command. His other interests include skydiving, cycling, and motorcycling. He is the father of five children. And whereas, the city of Shreveport, he is blowing back here. Whereas, the city of Shreveport, in conjunction with the Shreveport Airport Authority, is pleased and honored to recognize the philanthropic contributions, the community involvements, the business acumen, and the stellar flying career of Mr. Fred L. Phillips. Now therefore, I, Ollie S. Tyler, Mayor of the City of Shreveport, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2017, as Mr. Fred L. Phillips Day in the City of Shreveport, and urge our citizens to applaud the work that he's doing to make our city a better place to live and grow. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed. Congratulations, Mr. Phillips.
I want to thank the mayor and the city council for recognizing me today, my day. I've had an outpouring of appreciation and respect from the NTSB, the FAA, the Airport Authority, and now the City of Shreveport.
Absolutely.
I feel like I'm being nodded or something. I have lived here all my life. I have been a pilot, flying out of Regional Airport for 50 years. I have great respect for the airport and for the administration that manages the airport. Henry Thompson is here today, Bill Cooksey, and the whole bunch out there. The airport's our gateway, and I'm happy to be able to share it. And I'll close by saying that a mile of highway will take you a mile, but a mile of runway will take you anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're proud of you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker. Yes. Thank you so much.
One proud son, I just want to tell you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, those are the announcements that we have for today.
Okay, Madam Clerk, thank you. At this time, we'll turn to reports. Does anyone have any, councilmembers have any questions or concerns relative to proper standards? Mr. Green, seeing none, we thank you for your service. Mr. Sweeney, do you have any report you'd like to give at this time?
No.
Okay. And the Finance Department, I believe, has provided us with the numbers. Okay, let's move on, Mr. Thompson.
We have no public hearings, Mr. Chairman. We have no items to add to the agenda.
And no confirmations or appointments, right?
That's correct.
There are no items, then we'll move on down to Mr. Thompson. We'll proceed on down.
Do we? We have any comments?
I don't know, we got some.
Comments?
At this time, the Chair will recognize Mr. John Atkins. Mr. Atkins, will you come forth, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, if we have people who have signed up to speak about the zoning hearing, can we hold those comments until that time?
Okay, you want to do those first? Okay.
No, no, we're saying.
Yeah, yeah, we do have some, and I'll hold those at that time. This time, Mr. John Atkins.
He is for the, he's for.
Liquor.
He's for the zoning.
Oh. Zoning number, 102?
I'm sure.
All of them are for the zoning matter. Okay. Sure. All right. Public comments.
That is a public comment.
Okay, the Chair recognizes Ken Craft.
It's at the end.
Can you do this?
I'll go down. It says it's relative to a bonding issue, so there, we have those on the agenda.
Okay, at this time, the Chair sees no public comments. We'll move to Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, we have one item on the consent agenda. It's Resolution 192, and a motion to adopt 192 would be in order.
Do you have a motion?
I do move, Chairman.
Motion by Councilman Bradford. This is a second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes.
We're now into resolutions on second reading and final passage. Resolution 189 was previously postponed until December 22nd, so no action is necessary. Resolution 190 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Shreveport and Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, LLC, for the purpose of an external audit of the city for fiscal year January 1st, 2017, through December 3rd, 2017.
Second.
Okay, I hear a motion by Councilman Jenkins, a second by Councilman Corbin. Is there any discussion? Let's vote. And the motion passes.
Resolution 193 approves the request of the City Court to impose a $5 judicial building fund fee to maintain and support an electronic case management and file system.
Still move. Second. I have a motion by Councilman Jenkins, a second by Councilman Efferson. Is there any discussion? Let's vote. Okay. Motion passes.
Resolution 194 will give preliminary approval to the issuance of not exceeding $50 million of general obligation refunding bonds of the city for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bonds, Series 2011, making application to the State Bond Commission and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Second.
Second. Motion by Councilman Corbin, second by Councilman Efferson. Any discussion? Let's vote. And the motion passes.
We're now into introduction of resolutions. There was some discussion yesterday about withdrawing Resolution 195.
Yeah, I'd like to move to withdraw Resolution 195.
Second. Second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Okay, motion to withdraw has been approved. Passes.
Resolution 196 authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the City and A Beasley and Properties, LLC, for the Southern Loop Common Sanitary Sewer mains and related fixtures.
Second, Mr. Chair. Motion by Councilman Corbin, second by the Chair. Any discussion?
Are we going to introduce these one by one, or are you going to take them all?
Appurtenances. Appertinent dances.
I'm sorry.
We'll postpone the motion.
Where are we at? Discussions. I know, but we're on 196.
197 authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the City of Shreveport and Lan yap Landing, LLC, enacting herein through Kenneth G. Lawler, its member manager for the private sewer, sanitary sewer and water main extensions and related facilities to serve Lake Shore Harbor Estates. Resolution 198 employs professionals with respect to the proposed issuance of not exceeding $50 million of general obligation refunding bonds of the city for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bond, Series 2011, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Resolution 199 authorizes execution of a retain agreement with Napoleon Shakel, Goldnick, Scolnick, PLLC, and Kenneth M. Carter, APLC. Resolution 200 states the City of Shreveport's endorsement of Redwood Acquisition Shreveport, Inc., to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
No further discussion. Second. Okay, Councilman Bradford, and second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? And the pass.
We're now into introduction of ordinances. Ordinance 142 amends Chapter 102 Vehicles For Hire Article 3A Operating Regulations, Section 10288 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Shreveport, amending the 2017 budget, that's Ordinance 143, for the general fund and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Ordinance 144 amends the 2017 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 145 amends the 2017 Downtown Entertainment Economic Development District Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 146 amends the 2017 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 147 amends the City of Shreveport General Fund Budget, appropriating funds authorized therein and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Ordinance 148 provides the issuance and sale of not exceeding $50 million of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2011, of the City of Shreveport, prescribing the form of fixing the details and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for the repayment of such bonds and the application of the proceeds thereof, to the refunding of the city's general obligation bond, Series 2011, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Ordinance 149 amends and reenacts certain provisions of Chapter 10, Chapter 62, and Chapter 78 of the Code, relative to allowing open containers and public outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages in designated downtown areas, which includes sidewalk cafes and bistros adjacent to certain premises, and to allow open container and outdoor sidewalk cafes, outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages citywide, to include on city property when a lawful local city temporary special event alcohol permit is obtained, and to allow for an applicant to apply for a local city temporary special event alcohol permit in an area within the City of Shreveport and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Ordinance 160 repeals Section 10-84 of the Code of Chapter 10. Ordinance 150 repeals Section 10-84 of Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 4, relative to the requirement of physical separation from other business operations of sales of beverages of high alcoholic content for consumption off premises and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
I'd like to move to introduce the ordinances, 142 to 149. And I'm omitting Ordinance 150 because I did have some questions about how it works relative to the Unified Development Code. I got a lot of answers today, but I've not had a chance to review it yet, and I just wasn't comfortable moving forward until we've had a chance to look at that, so.
Say you can introduce it and table it if you want.
That's true, or we could just hold it off to the next agenda and introduce it then.
Okay, Councilman Efferson, Councilman Corbin, is there any further discussion? This is 143 through 149. Let's vote. Okay, motion passes.
And 150, we're going to withdraw.
Oh, do I need to make a motion to withdraw now? Or I just?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'd move to.
Can we introduce and table it?
Move. Yeah, I can introduce and table. We can do that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Vote, please.
Okay, motion introduced. Now we're going to motion.
And table.
Table. Same.
Motion is adopted.
Okay. We have motion, second, just tape. Please vote.
It's inclusive, it's the same.
Same, same thought as you. Yeah, we're done with.
Good, good, okay.
We're now, the ordinance is on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 138 amends the 2017 capital improvements budget. This involves.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Okay, that passes.
Ordinance 139 amends sections in Chapter 14.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Efferson, other members of council, if individual has signed up, if this passes, wants to speak. Would it be appropriate at this time to let that person speak, although we want to hold that?
Is it?
It's in regard to the 139 just passed.
Would it be more appropriate to wait till the public comments?
Okay.
Or is that okay?
That's fine.
I don't know the nature of the comment. I mean, is it something immediate? It needs to be.
Well, we'll speak if only passes.
Okay.
So we'll hold that in public comments. Okay, Mr..
Ordinance 140 concerns case number C-103-17. It will rezon property located on the southeast corner of St. Vincent and Oakley Drive from R17 Single Family Residential District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Second.
Second by Councilman Corbin. Any other discussion? Let's vote. And it passes.
Ordinance 141 concerns case number C-104-17. It will rezon property located on the west side of Lenwood Avenue, 240 feet south of McCary Street, from C3 General Commercial District to C4 Heavy Commercial District.
So move.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bradford. Any discussion? Motion passes.
Those are all of the items on the regular agenda. There was some discussion yesterday about removing from the agenda one of the items on the table legislation.
I'd like to make a motion to remove Ordinance 118 of 2015 from the table and then remove it from the agenda. Can I do that in one motion?
Second, Mr. Kane.
Okay, second by Councilman Bradford. Any discussion? And the motion passes.
And as I discussed yesterday, because the charter requires us to act on the budget ordinances before the 15th of next month, we will put them on the regular agenda unless there is some objection for the next meeting.
Okay. I would say we didn't do it, we'll go to jail. Do you see?
Do we need to make a motion to put that or that? You can just move it, however.
Go to jail. Got to deal with it, okay. Okay, we have no property standard appeals, no alcohol appeals. There are two zoning appeals to consider. Mr. Thompson, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, there are two zoning appeals, but there's one case. It's zoning appeal case number C-102-17, 327 Kings Highway, southeast corner of Kings Highway and Gilbert Drive. There's an appeal by Lake Shore Liquor, and there's an appeal by Ashley Atkins and Don Carvna.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, it'll be appropriate this time to let those that were signed up speak.
Yes.
And we'll start with Mr. James Godey. Mr. James, if you'll come to the mic, please. Stand on blue line behind there. Do not touch the mic. And give us three minutes, and give us your name and address, please.
Yeah. I'm James Gudo. I live at 240 Atkins. I'm here to express our opposition to the zoning change. To me, this represents a significant change for the neighborhood in putting in a liquor store there. I recognize that the property was previously zoned for the Circle K that has moved across the street, but I think putting a liquor store there makes a significant change to the neighborhood. I cannot argue that putting a liquor store two blocks from a college and a block from a high school parking lot is a very good idea. I think when you look at what's developing in Kings Highway, I don't see how a liquor store in that area moves the plan that I've seen on TV about the Kings Highway corridor. Right now, you've got an artist shop down the street, you've got businesses. I don't see a liquor store and the type of traffic that that will create improving the neighborhood, which is primarily residential, both sides of the Kings Highway corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I recognize Kathleen Anderson. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
I am Kathleen Anderson, 501 Gladstone Boulevard, and this is in regard to the Circle K being zoned for a liquor store. Please do not say the words, quote, "Anything going into this is better than a vacant building," because this is not true. Please work for us to bring in desirable businesses that will enhance the Kings Highway corridor. Bring us businesses that will make our neighborhood a place newcomers will want to buy into and live. Bring us businesses that will raise our property values. This is our historic area. We are restoring an old home. We are trying to make the area more beautiful. We live where our neighbors still go out and walk after dark, even late into the evening. Please do not damage that. Please do not put a liquor store in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Next, to Mr. Bart McDonald.
Bart McDonald, I live at 206 Gladstone Boulevard. Hopefully, you've seen the email that I sent each of you that outlines my opposition and why. With your permission, we have several people here that might not be willing to come up and speak. Would it be okay if they stood?
Why, sir?
If you're opposed? Near from our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dan Caruna.
I've spent the vast part of.
State your name and address.
My name is Dan Caruna. I live at 2508 Lake Crest Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. Most of the work that I've done in the last 20 years has been redoing houses along the Kings Highway corridor. I've improved a lot of houses, taken a lot of them that have been dilapidated and completely rehabbed, and they now have families living in them. I've worked, we have a lot of rental property in that area. We've worked very hard to improve those properties. We don't feel that a liquor store is a good use for that property. I believe it'll increase crime. I've submitted a study based on that that I submitted earlier. Believe that most of the other liquor stores in town are much busier corridors. We've just spent time and money changing that Gilbert Avenue to have bike paths, to make it more friendly. to have bike paths to make it more friendly to residential users and and I think this is a turn in the other direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Atkins.
Hi, I'm Ashley Atkins, 126 Centenary Circle. I'm here to oppose the special use that was approved by the MPC. I don't need to remind you all, but I will go ahead and speak about it. Section 16.3 of the UDC sets forth the approval of standards for a special use. Two of them are very particular in this case. The establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use will not endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. The second, the proposed special use is compatible with the general land use of adjacent properties excuse me, other property within the immediate vicinity. This application does not satisfy either criteria. The public health, safety, and welfare. The Highland neighborhood in particular has seen a decline in property values. Highland Area Partnership, Gladstone Area Partnership are all seeking investment to reverse that trend, and millions of dollars has been put into this area in the last 10 to 15 years to reverse that. Highland is also home to many group homes, rehabilitation facilities, and halfway houses with persons recovering or attempting to recover from addictions. Why put a liquor store here to tempt that? The site is very small and does not provide for easy ingress and egress. This is the reason why the MPC attached a significant condition to its approval. There is no additional capital investment to upgrade the existing facility as planned. It is an abandoned old convenience store and will remain so. It is also likely to draw traffic from other areas to purchase liquor. General land use of adjacent properties. There are generally no freestanding alcohol outlets in the vicinity. Beer and wine are sold in conjunction with food and other items, not as the primary use. The site backs up to residential homes. People with small children live in these homes. Kings Highway is much more narrow and congested as opposed to other areas like Shreve City, Yuri Drive, or Burke Coons that can hold these freestanding liquor stores. Private investors have made significant improvements and investments to upgrade the surrounding properties. Let's not take that away. The council recently denied a similar proposal. I believe it was in August we were all here discussing it. And the Old Don Seafood site. Liquor was not the primary use of that development, but it would have only been a part. It's an even stronger reason to oppose it here because it is the sole use. Again, I'm here to propose it. I would like nothing better than something positive to go in that space, but this just doesn't happen to be it. I own commercial buildings that are empty. I feel for the landowner who is not, you know, getting rent. I'm the same way. But you don't just put something in it that doesn't fit with the neighborhood. Thanks.
Mr. John Atkins.
State the name. John B. Atkins III, 235 Kings Highway, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm not gonna reiterate some of the things that Mrs. Atkins said, so I'll try to go over my notes without that. I'm a City of Shreveport resident and owner of the following properties. Seven buildings between 225 and 303 Kings Highway. The three buildings between 321 and 333 Atkins, which are in very close proximity across the Atkins from the rear of the Circle K or their old Circle K. The three buildings between 3113 and 3135 Centenary Boulevard and then 126 Centenary Circle in the area. This represents around a $2 million capital investment in that just immediate area that we have worked on over the past seven years or so. We've redeveloped these properties past the point of their functionality, i.e., we've redeveloped them aesthetically for the neighborhood and for the tenants that live there. I have a few points to go across. This area is still heavily residential. The thrifty liquor on Yuri Drive is in a corridor that is appreciably, if not totally, commercial. This corridor differentiates in that. In the blocks immediately adjacent to this proposed development, there are 37 apartment residents and four single-family homes that are still in existence and are continue to be used in that manner. Unlike other liquor stores on Centenary and Yuri, the store will be in close proximity to Bird High School, Crestwood Elementary, and Centenary College. I know this is outside the zone, which forbids such use, but is nonetheless very close to these schools. We've already touched on this, but this is a high-traffic area with the post office and Circle K and the oil change facility, and our feeling is we'll add to that. I realize that other neighborhoods have fought these stores in the past and have failed. I emphasize, I empathize with these neighborhoods and believe that these decisions were wrong. I would not want to put my business in a neighborhood where the neighborhood is against it, and the government should not force us on said neighborhoods. Arguments have been made that vacant buildings are bad for the city and the neighborhood. This argument has merit, but sometimes the highest and best use for the property is not the first or even the fifth use that comes across. I've made an offer on this property, but we could not come to fruition on it. But I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is and try to keep redeveloping this area as we have done in the past. Also, there's a litany of articles on the internet that probably people have given you. If not, then they're easily accessible on the negative aspects of liquor stores and neighborhoods. There is none such article that I could find in my research on any positive aspect that a liquor store could bring to a neighborhood. Lastly, admission to the petition that we have in the neighborhood with 200, sorry, 60-something fiscal signatures. We had a 200-plus signature petition.
Your time has expired.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bobby Sutton.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Bobby Sutton, Senior, 1027 Jordan, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm the attorney for Mr. Woods, the applicant. Mr. Woods is actually appealing only to the stipulations 1, 2, and 3 that the MPC put on their approval of his special use permits, his application for a special use permit. And what we must understand about this appeal and the opponents to this appeal is this. Mr. Woods could, of right, right now, open that business and sell beer and wine without any permit from the MPC. He would not have to apply for anything. He could simply go open it today and sell beer and wine. So the opponents speaking here would not be here speaking. We would not need any permit. So what we are appealing is simply the stipulations 1, 2, and 3. You know, the Kings Highway has been developing into a commercial corridor for years now. What has happened is the residences that were on this street, particularly in this area, are no longer, well, very few of them are residences now. They've been converted to commercial use or a lot of them are sitting empty. Right now, there are about four empty buildings, not including the subject building, sitting within this one-block area. I'm sure you recall when the former restaurant, Don Seafood, came up for application and was denied. That building has now been sitting there for, I don't know how many years, two years, whatever it's been. The Chevron Station right across Highland from it is empty. It's no longer in business. Going on down toward the subject property in the middle of that block, there are two other empty buildings. So we know that what happens in this process when a residential area is changing over to a commercial area and the people move out of the residences and they become commercial, what happens is you start getting abandoned buildings. This building, this subject building, has been empty since the first of this year. And it has been highly, highly recruited to try and get people into it. So what we're appealing is the requirements of the MPC statute, 1, 2, and 3 regarding closing a driveway and the other things that has to be done in conjunction with closing that driveway. Not only costly to implement, but a sound argument can be made that they're not beneficial for the stated purpose of the MPC. And I'll give you an example. MPC in its staff report says, "With a single liquor retailer in the general area, it is difficult to provide a compelling reason from a land use perspective to recommend denial of this request." Then they say this.
But such a time has expired.
I'm sorry.
Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you. What we're saying is that the MPC says added activity. There is no added activity because we're not selling gasoline as the store was before. And all the thing is, is the added liquor to the inventory. Thank you.
Betty Humphries. Ms. Humphries, please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
I'll be really quick. I wanna ditto. My name is Betty Humphries. I live at 311 Gladstone. We also have a home at 316 Forest. That was my mother-in-law's for 35 years, and we have the one next door to us. I also have property in Highland that is rental that we've worked on for 41 years, trying to keep this area good. And thanks, the bicycle lanes. I didn't even think it would work, but they've been wonderful. We've got people off the middle of the streets now on the side where we can actually drive in the middle of the street. We went out, three of us, we didn't even know about this till about a week ago. Four of the neighbors, we went out. We've got 85 more signatures. And let me tell you, most of these people didn't even know this was happening. They thought we were gonna have a nice, low-end, low-traffic strip mall. So it was shocking walking the neighborhoods. We have walked probably 12 blocks talking to our neighbors with all these signatures. Nobody wants this. My children were three and seven. We picked this neighborhood because it was so wonderful. And now we're the grandparents. We've got so many wonderful families with young children now. We can't destroy this neighborhood. We've got to keep it. And it doesn't have anything to do with Kings Highway. We've just gotta get good businesses there. The traffic with Circle K is three times more now than we had it in the little one. You can't even get out of the post office. It's dangerous. You almost get hit there. And someone the other day told me that the bus systems have changed and we've got maybe one or two buses going on Kings Highway through that intersection. So, anyway, please consider voting no for this.
Edward Crawford.
My name is Edward Crawford. I live at 3321 Centenary Boulevard. And before that, I lived at 142 Centenary Circle, across the street. I've been in this neighborhood for 60 years. I want to just reiterate what's been said. There've been a lot of good comments made. I'm speaking in opposition to the liquor store. The comments made earlier by one of the gentlemen in favor of it was that there are plenty of commercial places already there. If you drive around that block, it's 100% residential except for one empty vacant space which wishes to be a, someone wishes to have a liquor store in. Okay? So everything there is residential. The entire block, every single house is residential, back and sides. To reiterate what John Atkins said, he and his partners, and I've been a supporter of this, have reinvested and purchased over 30 or 40 units in the area. And not only just bought them, every single one has been improved drastically. New kitchens, new interiors, great new floors, new AC. Everything's been upgraded and improved, and they're now leased. Paying good tax rates, and they're solid, and the area is very stable right now. I don't think anyone would say that this is a good change. I think it's a bad one. We're not against commerce. In fact, the $1.5 million or more has been spent in residential commerce. And we're still working to pick up new properties and improve them and relet them. So there's commerce going on. It's just not liquor store commerce. We would welcome any other kind of use that would be appropriate for the neighborhood. As was said earlier, we have bike lanes going up and down there now. I know that you all going up and down Gilbert notice that they run right beside what would be a liquor store. So I'm just trying to reiterate the major points. This is not an appropriate use for this property. It's surrounded by 100% residential in that block. The citizens are against it. We have letters which should be in your package from the Highland Association, the Gladstone Association, and over 100 or more local residents who are opposed to this. Many of them couldn't be here today because of their work schedules. And I guess my concluding thing would be, what is best for the city? A vibrant neighborhood that's growing and have, you have local people reinvesting in it and improving it? Or the addition of a liquor store, which is only use is to, the only improvement that we understand is gonna happen, they'll gut the building, put a bunch of racks up, and sell liquor out of it. We agree there's wine and beer being sold, and we're okay with that. That's been there for years. But the addition of the liquor store would make a real change in the neighborhood, and we oppose that very much. Thank you for your time.
Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard Department, M110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I come today with a very concerned matter about this just as well, and it has to be talked about at once. Word has been getting around that an applicant does want to turn the Kings Highway and Gilbert Old Circle K into a liquor store. I say no way. No. And the reason I'm saying this is because I don't touch alcohol. I don't touch beer. It's disgusting and pathetic. And the reason I also say it is because the fact is that with all the crime stuff that's been going on, the crime rates that have been really increasing and homicides like that, all this kind of stuff could be turned into a reenactment of the Civil War, and I won't tolerate it. Now, I will admit that I'm very torn up inside when it came down to Lyon Avenue and to Centenary Circle K right up the street from where I live that got shut down. I wasn't happy about that happening. And I didn't like that either, so those need to be left alone just as well. And especially of there on Centenary Boulevard where I live. I will not tolerate that. Now, the fact of the matter is that there's a lot of killings that could take place, like drive-by shootings, stabbing, gunshots, the use of illegal drugs, and a lot of drug busts that could possibly happen. It could happen on Kings Highway. It could happen over on Lyon Avenue. It could happen at Centenary Boulevard where I live. And I don't like this. We've heard some gunshots going on up there close by Oak Meadows Apartments where I live. And a few people have told me they're not going to tolerate it. So I can be very understanding about that. I don't like that, especially at night when me and other people are trying to sleep. And if anyone's doing that kind of stuff, they'll probably hit their head on the pom-pom, and they need to stop it. This situation has got to stop. We don't need that. If you'll search your heart and you'll see that I'm right, search your heart and know that I am definitely right at once. Because I do agree with both Ashley Atkins and Don Kornah, if that's how you pronounce his last name. I agree with every one of the people that have opposed this. I agree with everything they said because it's just inappropriate. And we don't need any more liquor. Couldn't there be something else that could be possibly turned into? Like maybe a little shop or maybe a place for house salads or maybe a little pastry? That could be possible. I'd like that better. If it doesn't mean a thing to any of you, it does to me and all the people that are here today. They've spent their time talking about how they feel. I'm doing the same. Please take this into consideration and deny the situation.
Marion Marks.
My name is Marion Marks, 509 Linden, 71104. Given my preferences, I wouldn't want a liquor store in my neighborhood. I live in that neighborhood. But no one else has stepped up to develop the property, to do what it takes to put an operating business in that location. It sat vacant for essentially a year. It's been on the market longer than that. All of the vacant buildings. All of the vacant buildings on King's Highway could be reded for other uses. What is unfortunate is that the residents have not been willing to meet with Mr. Woods. They have suggested alternatives of what he should do if he wanted a liquor store, but even if he stepped up with these, they suggest a Cuban liquor-type location. If he only had food, that's not the way to make a business work. You don't tell other people. Mr. Woods has offered to meet with these people. I went out, evaluated his current store as best I could in terms of cleanliness and the way the business was operated. I checked on the crime record of the business. He runs a very clean business. As far as bringing crime to the neighborhood, there's more crime in the parking lot of Circle K than there ought to be, but it's not stopping Circle K from doing business. Given choices, I wish the neighbors would meet with Mr. Woods and his representatives and work out a solution for a way he could operate that store. But up to this point, there has been no willingness, and I think it's most unfortunate. The fact that he could move in today and operate beer and wine sales, there's not that big a difference. And knowing his attitude of what he allows in his current store, I don't think there are going to be the problems. We have many problems along the King's Highway corridor, but I don't think Mr. Woods would allow that type of change to affect his business. Thank you.
James Carstensen? James, your name and address, and you have three minutes.
James Carstensen, 913 Prospect Street, Shreveport. I don't really need three minutes, just like Shreveport doesn't really need another liquor store. I'd ask any one of you to pull out your smartphone and do a Google search for liquor store and see, you know, 61-plus pull-up right here in the area. We just don't need it, and especially not in the Highland neighborhood. That's all I really got to say. Thanks.
Bill Sanders?
Bill Sanders, 5500 Bankers Avenue, Baton Rouge. I've been asked to speak on behalf of the owners, the Caston family. I'm their real estate broker. I'm with Bo Box Commercial Real Estate. And a couple facts I'd like to point out. I've marketed the property for the past 12 months on behalf of the owners, and among the types of users that we reached out to, to occupy the old Circle K, we reached out to a number of restaurants, reached out to auto parts stores, cell phone stores, smoothie shops, yogurt shops, businesses that if I were living in the neighborhood, I would like to see come in there, and none of those businesses were interested in leasing the property. We received a lot of inbound calls off the sign because King's Highway is a very well-traveled corridor. Among the users, the uses that we received calls for were other liquor stores, non-branded convenience stores selling discount gasoline, cigarettes, beer and wine, payday lenders, check cashing stores, but none of these users submitted a letter of intent. We had over 100 people call and request information on the site. Mr. Woods was different in the sense that he's a veteran, he's a local business, he's got an established business. You know, one thing I'd like to point out, Circle K is open 24/7, 365. Mr. Woods would be closed on Sunday, and he would also be closed in the evening. And right now, we've got a property that is blighted, and it's sitting vacant like so many other properties on Kings. I wish that was not the case. We'd love to put this building back into commerce, and I think it's important that we be diligent to who we lease these properties to for now and for the future. And we vetted Mr. Woods. We're very impressed with him, and we'd like to at least have you consider allowing him to operate in this facility. Thank you.
Graham Todd?
Graham Todd, 503 Atkins Avenue, Shreveport, 71104. Just want to thank the council for the time. My family, we are in opposition to this, as we were in opposition to the Don Seafood Liquor Store and Gas Station. I think this really highlights, this decision highlights more the issue of what direction does the city of Shreveport want to go? What vision do they have particularly for King's Highway? I think King's Highway kind of stands on a precipice of which direction to go. You have people like the Atkins who are working hard to revitalize and invest and improve properties there. And I'm not saying that the proponent would not improve the quality of the structure that's there right now and make investment in that. That's not what I'm saying. But what I am saying is that it indicates a direction of whether King's Highway becomes a truly complete commercial corridor, or is it a corridor for traffic between two large residential areas? That's really what this is about. What is the vision that the city of Shreveport has for King's Highway? Do you want to try and keep it as an area where traffic flows through between two large residential areas, and it has a residential flavor to it? A grocery store, Brookshires, a convenience store, Circle K? It'd be great if something like Don Seafood would reopen, a large restaurant. It'd be great if a smoothie shop would go in that location right there. I think that fits with the flavor of the Highland area, that that area is still at least 50/50 residential and commercial. There are other parts of King's Highway that are predominantly commercial, but the staff report does note that there are residential and commercial zoning in that area. So, this really comes down to which direction do you want to go? I have nothing against the proponent personally, but I think most of us who live in the area recognize that putting a liquor store in there indicates a certain direction, heavily commercial activity that is not conducive to neighborhood activity, and that is why my family, we are opposed to it. Thank you very much for your time.
Lloyd Thompson?
Lloyd Thompson, 1315 Mowlem. I just come far because I remember some years ago when I served on the MPC, there was a McDonald's being built on King's Highway, nobody wanted it. Windows were being built on King's Highway, nobody wanted it. But those two businesses there on King's Highway, I believe the community in that area need to get the opportunity to Mr. Woods to look at the kind of business he has. Circle K right across the street, I stopped there, they hardly couldn't get in there. 50 cents. Hey, man, you got 50 cents? You got a dollar. Circle K sell beer. They serve wine coolers. They serve the same thing that will be served across the street. So, I ask the community, please do not run businesses out of your community. The more business we have, the more jobs we can provide and things we can do to make our community a better place. Thank you.
Bernie Woods?
Bernie Woods, I live at 3001 Curtis Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana, and I'm here asking the city to approve this venture. There's a couple of things that I'd like to say. First of all, that's just, I can appreciate the opposition, but I would like to invite the opposition, number one, to visit the location that I have now. I have a proven track record. I've been, I took a Circle K that was closed, like this one, and I invested quite a considerable amount of money in the Circle K. I don't just have racks in there serving liquor. I put in new floors, new tiles, new ceilings, a new walk-in cooler. My store is not second grade to any liquor store in this town. It's a first-class liquor store, and I would do the same over there. The other thing I'd like to say is the notion that there is somehow going to be a real change in the clientele and whether or not there's going to introduce crime. That simply has not been the case. A proven track record for seven, eight years, excuse me, eight years, where there has been no increase in crime, no increase in any activity like that at the liquor store where I own, which is 2700 Lakeshore Drive. So, number one, I am willing to invest money in the building and outside the building to make that a very, very attractive business, number one. The other thing I'd like to say is that I would ask the city council to consider just being consistent in how you vote for this. There is a liquor store right down the street from my liquor store on Hearn that is recently been put in. It was a store that was not even zoned for liquor, they never sold beer and wine there. There was opposition from the community, I'm sure of that. But I think that these neighbors might find that the neighbors now realize that the liquor store has not changed the community that drastically. There has not been an increase in crime, there has not been an increase in deviants hanging around at this location on Hearn. So, I'm asking the city council to be consistent. If there can be opposition to one on Hearn, and it goes in, and there is proof that it hasn't changed the neighborhood that much, and we don't have a vacant building, I would ask you to give me the same consideration. I would also like to say that Thrifty Liquor on King's Highway, I mean on Yuri Avenue, Thrifty Liquor is right up, but it's right up to residential area. There are houses right in the back of Thrifty Liquor. There are houses right directly in the back of Thrifty Liquor. Those are considerations that I would ask this body to consider. I'm not going to denigrate the neighborhood by being there, operating that liquor store.
Members of council, that's all I have signed up to speak. Everyone had the opportunity to speak that's here? No, that's, this, yes, ma'am. This is concerning the appeal. Okay, you come speak, but you're going to need to fill that form out. Come on, we'll allow you to speak. You need to fill out a form in the back, but come on, go ahead and do that. We'll give you an opportunity to speak. Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Heidi Jerken. I live at 227 Forest Avenue. I want to talk about a point that was touched on very briefly. Somebody said that there's a lot of walking going on in this neighborhood, and this is true, and it goes on at all hours of the night. My husband likes to walk in the evening when he gets home from work. I like to walk in the afternoon. But there are walkers, and it's not just adults, okay? There's a group of at least 30 kids who live in this neighborhood. This neighborhood and these kids are not like typical kids and the typical neighborhoods you see today. I want you all to think back to when you were a child. Were you inside playing video games all day? I bet you weren't. You were outside playing. You were outside riding your bike. That is what the children in this neighborhood do. On any given day, you can drive up Forest, around Gladstone, through Atkins, and see children outside playing. These children are the future of this community. These are the people who will inherit what we are building today. Don't take this away from them. Don't take away this safe neighborhood where they can use the new bike paths that you just put in on Gilbert. Think about these kids, okay? Business aside, property values aside, we all know what it means for this neighborhood, the property values, the potential for increased crime. The crime is the problem. These kids are out there, okay? We allow our children, most of us, and some of these kids are here today because they care about this too, we allow our children in the mornings, just like we did back in the 70s and 80s, to go outside and say, "We'll see you later, go play with the kids," and the kids run around, and they play, and they're outside. They're playing tag, they're riding bikes, they're enjoying being kids. They're not inside on their video games, okay? Don't take that away from these kids. If I can appeal to you in any way, remember the kids. You can see their faces. There's two sitting right there, one sitting right there, there's one young one over here. We have babies coming up. This is a young neighborhood, and there's going to be more children, and those children want to play outside and enjoy this freedom also. So, think about this. Think about what your childhood was like and what many children don't have today, but these kids do, so please don't take it away from them. Thank you very much for your time.
Be sure to fill out your form for me, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Amy Bokenfor. I reside at 306 Gladstone Boulevard. We recently just moved back into the neighborhood, back home as we call it. We lived in Benton for 15 years, and have it be, we, fate came into our lap, and we found the home of our dreams, and we felt the need to move back home. Being that, we left the safety net of the Benton area to be in a cultural diverse area like Shreveport and the Highland area, and we love where we live, and we want to keep it like that. I stress revitalization as we decided to move back and invest and contribute to the revitalization of the beautiful Gladstone area and the Highland neighborhood. Statistically, it is shown, even though some folks may disagree, that liquor and convenience stores of such can lead to increased crime and traffic. This type of establishment will not help our area. We already have a convenience store, the Circle K, directly across the street that does sell beer and wine. In addition, we have a Brookshires grocery store a block away. So, in my opinion, there's no need for a third liquor establishment in a one-block area of this neighborhood. I grew up in Ellerby, my husband grew up on Patton Street, and we felt a calling to come back home to Shreveport. So, as a family, we could experience the culture and environment that is thriving here. We need to continue to nurture this culture with educated decisions on what will grow our city, not create decay. I pray this council hears our wishes and makes the right decision for our neighborhood. Thank you.
I'll make this brief, but I wanted to, Kristy Lynn, 305 Forest Avenue. I came here today with my young son, as evidenced as some of the other people spoke today, about the fact that we have some very young families in this neighborhood. My house is very close to this location. I'm very concerned about the idea that this type of establishment would be going into our neighborhood. We walk around that neighborhood constantly, and the idea of confronting individuals that are, have, you know, that's a source of, you know, where they're needing to fulfill some of their, maybe issues that they have or whatever, that doesn't seem like it's something that I want my family to confront as we're walking down the street every day. People begging for change. I mean, somebody mentioned, even referenced that the Circle K, people are out there looking for handouts and things like that. I'd like to be able to walk my family through an area that has, that feels safe and secure. And honestly, there's all, there are all these nice families in that area, and I think so many of us aren't looking for that to be part of our daily experience. And basically, what I wanted to say, someone else had also mentioned that the idea of this battle that we keep having to face, this idea that this neighborhood is in, there's some indecision about what should be happening with that neighborhood. And I personally feel like if we could have some, maybe there's an opportunity to try to encourage businesses that would be more attractive to young families, that would really keep and create some safety and security in the neighborhood because fewer families would be looking to move and to, you know, put their houses on the market because all these kind of negative things that continue to happen in the neighborhood, and we don't want to do that. I mean, I have to tell you that so many of our friends have already exited to Providence and things like that, and so, you know, I think we'd love to be able to stay in our neighborhood, but I don't foresee that if we're going to continue to have those battles where we have to, you know, fight businesses that don't match the direction of family security and safety, and, you know, things like parks going into the neighborhood would be fantastic. There's nowhere for my children to play right now, so we take walks a lot. And then, you know, the thing that I'm hearing is that now we'll be confronted with businesses that, you know, there's a new massage parlor and things like that that are going in on the street down there, and none of it matches the direction that these families need for the neighborhood. And so, I just would like... need for the neighborhood, um, and so I just would like to see more thought and consideration put into how we can attract the type of businesses that would, um, would create a secure neighborhood for our families. Thank you so much.
Ms. Marcia Wood. Please state your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Marcia Woods. I live at three thousand one Curtis Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. What is it all about today, really? It's about a liquor store that's coming into a neighborhood. We're not gonna put a ghetto liquor store in your neighborhood. My husband already addressed that. You can come and invite yourself to our liquor store and see. We run a upright business. We're zero tolerance. Now, is it really about liquor? Is it really? You got a Circle K right across the street that sells beer and wine. I think it's about responsibility. If someone comes into a gro- into a liquor store, most of the time, they're responsible drinkers. I mean, for you to, for, for everyone in this neighborhood to try to degrade us and say we don't want a liquor store in this business, does anyone in here drink? Does anyone in here drink liquor or wine or beer? What's the difference between having a liquor store as opposed to having a Circle K across the street that sells liquor, I mean, beer and wine? It's like we're gonna be inviting crime? No, we don't invite crime. We have no citations at our store. We've been there for seven, eight years. Come and see where we're at, and see what we'll bring to your neighborhood. We're of zero tolerance of behavior. No crime has ever been committed in our area. So, I invite everyone, take a field trip and come and see what we're about.
Melinda Purcell. Please state your name and address, you have three minutes.
I'm Melinda Purcell. I live at six thirty-nine Prospect, and I'm also on the Board of Directors for HRA. I know you've mentioned a letter, but I just want to read it to you. We sent a letter to the Planning Commission on October thirtieth, and we wrote, "This location sits just across from Highland Neighborhood and will affect it. From the application, it does not appear that there is any new investment involved or additional contribution to the neighborhood in the absence of some connection to other more positive use of the property. The proposal does not add to the enjoyment of life or the property values in the neighborhood. The applicant has not contacted HRA to our knowledge or any other neighbor groups. At its meeting October twenty-fifth, the Board of Directors voted to oppose this special use application and to prepare this letter expressing HRA's opposition. We urge you to deny this special use request, and thank you for your attention."
Thank you. That concludes all the speakers that have signed up. One more time, make sure everybody's had a chance to speak. At this time, the chair will recognize Councilman Bradford.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I may express my appreciation to those who have come and given their public commentary on this issue. I think this is democracy at its best when residents and concerned citizens would come out and make their wishes and expressions of their position regarding, uh, their neighborhoods in this city. Before I, Mr. Chairman, make a motion, I would like to ask Mr. Sweeney to come back up to the microphone. Sweeney, how are you?
Oh, just fine.
Sweeney, let me first congratulate you and your board on doing your job. Regardless of what the expressions was given, uh, you did your job. You didn't consider things that was out of your preview to consider. For instance, uh, there were some expressions made regarding saturating the area with liquor stores or with liquor outlets. The market would determine that, okay? If, if that's not a good location for this establishment and, uh, there's no business coming to this location, then that would determine whether or not that was a good investment for, for the applicant. But I want to ask you, uh, two things in regards to, uh, in your, in your, in your board decision, uh, you've, you followed the protocol of how those decisions are, are made, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And was there any particular issue that, that caused you to, your board to stutter in regards to giving a special use permit?
I think the key factor was asking the applicant to change his site plan to make it more attractive and more compatible with the adjacent residential area. The difference between this site and the site that the gentleman currently operates is, uh, even though it may operate well, it's pretty stark and sterile. It doesn't have a lot of, of amenities to it. And one of the things my board said was basically they wanted to look and see what had Circle K had done across the street, what the oil lube change place had done also across the street, when they redeveloped those properties and improved them. And in, in recommending this approval for, uh, a special use permit for alcohol, for, for liquor, it was asked that they put in the landscaping, that they closed one of the driveways, to be in accordance with the standards that the City Engineering Department has when it comes to traffic engineering, and to, uh, make certain improvements were made to the fencing around the property and to the dumpster site to make sure it is functional and operational as well. Those things were asked for, uh, as part of this condition for approval. Then it was appealed by the applicant as well as the residents. In this situation, I don't think, nobody was happy, I guess, because both sides were, were not, uh, happy with the outcome. The neighborhood definitely did not want a liquor store near them, that's, that's a given. Uh, the applicant chooses not to cooperate with what the MPC asked for in terms of making the site better and more compatible with the neighborhood, and so, we're kind of at a interesting, uh, between a rock and a hard place in this situation. So, I mean, the, the board recommended approval, but contingent on those improvements being made to the site.
I'm aware that, and, and-
Right.
And from my information, uh, after the, after the work session of yesterday, I went to both sites.
Right.
Uh, I first went through the, uh, site on King's Highway and observed that situation. And, uh, that parking area, Mrs. Sweeney, is not as, as large in, 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 in the capacity of parked cars. Uh, it's greater at this one, but, but what I wanted to bring up to your attention, when I left there, I went to the other location that, that is operated by Mr. Woods, and there happened to be a couple of delivery trucks, uh, that was there, and, and, uh, one was eighteen wheel and one was a, a semi truck. And with the stipulation you placed on the location over at King's Highway, I don't see how a delivery truck of the size that I saw yesterday could get any maneuver in and out of there and not create some, uh, some, uh, some disconven- inconvenience. Was that, was that, was that considered? Did y'all consider how that would operate?
Yes, sir, and, and based upon the maneuverability and the layout, because you've got to remember, there's no canopy anymore, and there's no gas pumps anymore. So, there's greater maneuverability than there was before Circle K was there.
With one, with one entrance?
Right. But the one entrance can handle both ingress and egress and pulls it further away from the neighborhood and further away from the intersection.
With parked cars there?
But the layout for the parking and the maneuverability is workable, based upon our site plan review.
Okay.
Because we always look at the maneuverability of delivery trucks as well as the parking for the patrons that come and, and visit the store site.
Well, and, I, I'm, I'm, I'm all sort of hesitate to disagree with you only because if, if it's one maybe, but if it's two or three that's come at the same time, I could see them trucks stopping in the middle, I mean, stopping in the right lane of King's Highway and blocking traffic until one come out to go back in. I, I, I'm just, I'm just, again, I may be wrong, just like a lot of the speakers here may be wrong, in their, in their, in their fear of what may happen there, you know? I mean, there was a, there was a guy once told me, and used the initials of fear, and said, uh, fear, if he was to use abbreviation, is false evidence appearing, uh, real. Uh, and, and my experiences have, have shown that sometime our greatest fear is not always realized, because we look at things, uh, as we are and not look at things as they are in the reality of things. Uh, and I, I'm just, again, trying to ascertain what, all consideration that you, your board considered in investigating and coming up with the, with the, uh, decisions you did, and especially offering these stipulations, especially the first two or three stipulations that I thought was somewhat come, come what, on, on, outside of his owner, I mean, the, the tenant, who would be Mr. Wood, the tenant's preview, and, and, and making the decision to, to do these things when the landowner or the property owner may not agree to that. I'm not, I'm not sure how that would work.
Well, except that Circle K did those improvements, and so did the, the lube shop across the street. We're trying to maintain the same standard of improvements to the site. If they're gonna be a good neighbor to the neighborhood, they should put their best foot forward. That's what the MPC was asking for, that if we're going to approve you to come through here, make these concessions to the neighborhood to be a good neighbor and make this a better site, even better than the sites you currently have on Hearn Avenue.
Well, I mean, you can't compare apples to onions, because Hearn Avenue has actually four, four entrances into that location.
Right. But that was what the thinking was with the MPC board.
But I, I think, I think, I think you created a little hardship on that, on that stipulation, Sweeney.
Well, it was a hardship for Circle K.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm saying that, that Circle K has, has been a proven commercial entity. Uh, they, you know, they survived, and then they, they thought enough of the neighborhood to stay in the neighborhood and move in a larger location across the street. But I, again, I thank you and your board for doing your job, for doing what you-
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Was assigned to do. You made the decision, but I think, uh, I just have, uh, issue with the, uh, stipulation. And, and to the, and to the, and to the, and to, and to those who are concerned about this. Again, I, uh, in nineteen ninety-two, uh, lived in Queensburg, and, uh, and Queensburg was much like some of these other neighborhoods, and I, uh, it was, it was, it was, it was deteriorating in the fact that things, undesirable, uh, elements was, was creeping into our neighborhood. We established the Queensburg Neighborhood Association. I became a co-founder and the first president, and we worked together to try to maintain our integrity of our community, and that's why I applaud those that are here today and making these, though their, their expressions and, and their, and their make. But at the same time, this body, uh, deals with, uh, what's right, what's the law, and you deal with the law, and the facts, and the facts are that these type of, uh, applications have been upheld. The stipulation that you imposed on this, on this business person, I think, was, uh, was a little different, because again, it was referenced to the one on Hearn, where the exit off of that property goes directly into our neighborhood. And the opposition, uh, the commentary was as great or greater than what we have here. Some of the same similarities, so, uh, but again, you know, there's a role for everybody in this equation to do their, do their, do just, you did yours, now it's up to this body to-
Absolutely.
Do the same. Thank you for, thank you for coming up. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, I'm all yield, but I, I want to make a motion.
Okay. Uh, let's hear it from Councilman Evers.
Okay, thank you. I was, um, gonna start out, I wanted to remind us, uh, one speaker mentioned it, but, you know, this is the first time we're being asked to consider an applica- an appeal under the new Unified Development Code and special use permit. And so, this is, um, you know, something that's a little different than the way we've considered, um, these type of applications, uh, in the past. Um, one of the things that this new language requires us to do, um, is to, uh, use the four, um, things that are on that worksheet in front of you, um, you have a special use permit worksheet in front of you. Um, and so there are four categories that have to be met, and, you know, given this process in the past, some decisions may have been made differently. They, they did not have this process in place at the time. Um, this process, uh, so, you know, it is a new one, and, um, I just want to make sure we're, we're familiar with that and that we understand what we're looking at here, because obviously, of course, you, you implement a new policy, and of course, the first one out the gate happens to be kind of a complicated one where both sides end up appealing it, so it's, uh, can't, can't be a super simple one. Um, but, um, what we have here is, um, four categories we're supposed to look at, I say categories, I guess, the-
Criteria.
Four criteria. Um, one is that we need to consider whether the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use, um, will not endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. Um, there have been arguments made about that, obviously, today. Um, the propos- the second one is that the proposed special use is compatible with the general land use of adjacent properties and other property within the immediate vicinity. I would argue that it, it is quite different than the, um, than the adjacent properties, they're residential. Uh, but then the next one is, uh, special use and the specific location proposed is consistent with this code, and the fourth one being that the special use conforms to the regulations of the zoning district where it will be located. Um, I did, I did also notice in the, you know, staff report that this building, um, really wouldn't be allowed to be built new in that same where, location where it is today. Anyway, it's a non-conforming structure, so it's a little bit unusual in that it does have a close proximity to the rear setback. Um, you know, there's not really a lot of room for like a dumpster or, you know, and these are, these are not specific to, to just this, but just in general, the site has some difficulties that I think were trying to be addressed by some of the stipulations that the MPC, I mean, that's my interpretation, is they were trying to address some of the difficulties of this particular site. Um, one of the things that, um, we also see in the staff report is it's saying that, um, you know, really any occupant of this site should, um, make every effort to direct traffic, both, um, vehicular traffic and foot traffic onto King's Highway, so as to minimize the impact on the residential, uh, neighborhood along Gilbert. Um, and of course, that, uh, is difficult because of, because of the access, like we talked about, that Councilman Bradford was referring to, because of the, the way vehicles turn around in there. But essentially, the, the site itself poses some difficulties, um, and so, um, you know, for those reasons, I would, I would move that we, um, overturn the, the decision of the MPC, um, and, you know, I understand Councilman Bradford mentioned, and there may be more discussion, but certainly just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. As, uh, Councilman Corbin, I'll be the next one to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the seven years that, that I've served on council, we've had a number of cases like this come before us. This is, I think, the first one under the new UDC and the new format. They're never easy, they're often filled with emotion, because they deal with our neighborhoods, our investment in our homes, change, whether it's real or perceived, uh, they're just always difficult. Um, you know, I, I hope that as we move forward with additional applications and additional cases, we find some new ways to communicate with neighborhoods, because I think if the neighbors and the applicant was more involved when this was at the MPC level, there may could have been some negotiations and discussions that may have been helpful, uh, that when we get to this level, it's a little harder to negotiate at, at that point. So, I'll say that to Mr. Sweeney, is let's look for every way we can to communicate, uh, future cases like this. I had an app, a conversation with someone earlier today, and I talked about this King's Highway corridor from Cresswell to Yuri Drive, and I think I kind of consider it a fragile area. Um, over time, we've seen a lot of our, um, you know, local restaurants go away, local businesses go away, uh, we've had change in use of buildings, and I think we have to be very careful how we plan for that moving forward. Quite often, as with this case, uh, when we do hear from those who have made an investment in the neighborhood, it's, instead of X, Y, Z, we would like an ice cream shop, or we'd like a boutique, or something like that. You know, unfortunately, when it gets to an MPC appeal, we don't get to choose what goes in there, and that's difficult and that's frustrating. You know, it's, that's up to the broker who's, who's- it's, that's up to the broker who's, who's putting this property out there and, and to the neighbors and traffic that may support something in, in that lot. As I look through the information provided to us, I have a lot of additional questions about the site plan as well. I think it's a very tight parking lot. I would certainly, I certainly have concerns about, you know, if this were to be approved, is the building going to look like a Circle K a year from now with a new sign stuck on the front of it? And, and I don't think that that is very appealing. It's certainly not appealing to me, and I don't think it's appealing to the directions that, that we want to go. But all that, just to say, you know, I think all of us up here are taking all the comments seriously. Certainly, we want to support business, but there's, there's a line that we have to look at. And we have to make sure that our neighborhoods stay intact and that the businesses that we approve and the zoning changes that we approve are consistent and applicable for that, for that neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
All right.
Councilman Bradford speaking or not?
No.
No.
No, we're waiting.
So, I'll just say one thing. Jeff mentioned very clearly that this is a much more regimented procedure than we used to have. And I know that probably doesn't mean a lot to y'all in the audience, but from, for us up here, we have never historically had to indicate what particular criteria we are using to make any motion on these type of appeals. And for those that don't realize, if nobody had appealed this under the new UDC, we would not have seen it at all. It would have gone straight from the MPC to being enacted after whatever the appropriate amount of time. So, this is unique. It is interesting to me, though, that one of these specific criteria is, is difficult for me to get over. And that is, is it compatible with the adjacent properties? And unlike most of the others, I am not aware of a liquor store that shares a common sidewalk with a residential property next door. Now, albeit they are foreign after each other, but the sidewalk does join the two properties. I think that is unique about this particular case. I may have my facts wrong. So, that, that's something that had we had a different form, maybe we would have had, in my opinion, maybe more latitude. But clearly, in this case, there is one of these criteria that is not being met under this, under the MPC's, you know, riposte. So, that's my comment. Are you gonna call for the question here, Mr. Bradford?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna make a motion, but I'm sure that's
Jeff has made a motion.
Where are we? I thought, I thought I had made a motion.
Motion to overrule.
I'm sorry, MPC.
The MPC. I don't believe that was a second.
We got a second there. I believe we had, it's good, but Councilman Bowman needs the question.
I just wanted to know what, what was the proposed hours of operation?
Eight to 12 P.M. I mean, 12 A.M., eight A.M. to 12 A.M.
Next Monday through
I mean, that's what the application says.
His is, his is, yeah.
Next Monday through Saturday, closed on Sundays.
Okay, a motion's been made to overrule
I'm getting that answer.
The reverse of the MPC decision, seconded by Councilman Jenkins. Is there any discussion?
Just a clarification. From the time of that application to, based on the, the revisions that we made a couple of weeks ago, Sunday would not have to be closed.
That's correct.
Well, I think the, I think, just to be clear, I think the, those hours were a stipulation of the MPC's approval, not a zoning requirement.
Could we clarify that? I think that's important.
He does not open on Sundays.
I can clarify. I'd open on Sunday and the hours would be something like 10 to 9:00, 10 to 10:00, Monday through Saturday. So, it's not, I don't, I do not open now on Sunday. And the hours over there would be quite different. So, 9 to, 9 to 9 or 9 to, or 10 to 10.
Mr. Chairman, if we, if the motion carries that's currently on the table, then discussion of stipulations and hours is
They're moved.
I need to make it very clear that in our conversations with the applicant, he gave us the hours, which was the time period to 12:00 midnight. That's what was presented to the MPC. The MPC agreed with what the applicant had stated and put it as a stipulation. We didn't come up with those hours. So, this is a change in times that were not related to us nor the MPC board.
But as, I think the point of clarity we were looking for is that those hours are part of the stipulation. They're not
That is correct.
zoning.
That was part of the stipulation.
That's what we want confirmed.
That's correct.
That you stipulated.
That's correct.
That's what we want. Okay, that's been cleared up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a substitute motion. Chairman, I move that the decision of the MPC to approve the application, the special use permit for the retail sale of alcohol at 327 King's Highway, we approve and modify by removing stipulations 1, 2, and 3, and approving stipulation 4, 5, and 6. I think the, the concern of the, of the, of the, of the, of the members regarding the four criterias is, is, is opinionated, is questionable. But I'll, I'll, I'll get that on the question. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with, with all due respect to Councilman Bradford's substitute motion, if, why can't we vote on the original motion because that deals with the zoning and then come back and deal with stipulations if the zoning passes?
Well, I, I think I'm in order with my motion.
Do you mean you need a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you have a second.
Right, yeah.
All right, Chair will second.
Okay. So, at this point, we are voting
On the substitute motion.
Substitute.
So, in my, in my, in my comments, Mr. Chairman, is, is that this building has been an established building at their location for many, many, many years. And, and just adding a product or two, I don't feel, I don't, I don't feel at all that it, that it, that it, it is detrimental to the danger of their community in regards to public health, the welfare of adjacent properties. And I see it as consistent with the other establishments that's up and down that, that, King's Highway. So, I don't, I don't, I don't see how, just adding a product or two, it is already available for beer and wine. Just adding an alcohol beverage is not, is gonna, is gonna be that detrimental in changing the, the context of their neighborhood. I just, I don't, I don't see that.
Okay, so your motion is to move that the decision be approved of the
With, with eliminating the stipulation 1, 2, and 3. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
Pretty sure. Not everybody got their vote?
Councilman Bowman had a vote.
Can you clear it?
Wait, I did not vote. Does that have me as a yes vote?
No.
No.
No, you did.
Just waiting on.
But we are. Councilman Bowman.
She's cleared the board.
Clear the board and re-vote. Three, three.
Submission, motion fails.
Motion fails.
So, moved on the original motion to overturn the
Okay. Any discussion?
MPC's decision.
Let's vote on that.
Motion fails.
And the motion's time, so it fails again.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can we get some clarification of what that vote means?
Neither one, neither one passes.
Neither motion, neither motion carries. The action of the MPC stands until it is either overturned by this body. I think just, what, 90 days?
Well.
They've already voted, so
No, no.
So, the action of the MPC will stand. The, the decision of the MPC stands.
That's correct.
What about a motion to remand it back to the MPC?
Well, but that, but, well, they approved it with the stipulations.
Correct. The appeal fails.
The stipulation appeal.
Correct.
So, so they can move with the, with the stipulations. But what if I offered a motion that, that we would now, that we would, that we would now table it?
Can't table it. It's already been voted on.
I'm sorry.
It's already been voted on.
But neither one, but it's still, it's still laying in a bag. There's, there's no
Once, once you, once you vote and you tie, this, the ruling of the MPC
But he could move it postponement.
Let me, let me ask the clerk.
You can move to postpone it.
I can move to postpone.
To the next meeting. There has to be action taken before
Special stipulation.
The vote, 90 a day. Okay. Okay. What Karen and I are discussing is because the action of the first vote was to overturn the appeal, excuse me, subsequent votes was to overturn the appeal, the appeal, the overturning of the appeal fails. So, under the code, it says the city council will affirm, overrule, or modify any action of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. The effect of a tied vote effectively affirms the original
Correct.
action of the MPC.
That's correct.
I think it is too late to make a motion at this point to postpone or table the decision because the decision has failed, or excuse me, the appeal has failed per the last motion.
Okay, so my question is, it's still laying in a bag. And, and will it come up in the future?
There is, there, now
What I mean, I'm sorry.
There is a right of the applicant to appeal, of the appellant, excuse me, at this point, to appeal to the next level, which will be the district court. So, there is recourse for those parties. It's not dead, per se. It's not the end of the road for them. But
But it's for this body.
Yeah, as far as this body, the last motion, as it stood, failed, which effectively affirmed the action of the MPC.
Correct.
Our vote allowed him to open a liquor store there.
Subject to stipulation.
Unless it's appealed to district court.
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, okay. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Clerk's report?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Lynette suggests that because of the way that we did it in the past, that that would be a motion to remove the budget items from the table, either at this meeting or the next meeting, so that the signature pages would be consistent. And so that would be my recommendation.
I saw movement, Mr. Chairman. Second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
To remove the table, budget items.
Remove the budget items to the day.
Sorry, I thought we'd already
Okay, let's vote. And that passes. Okay. Mr. Clerk, anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. Madam Mayor, is anything?
No.
Members of the council?
Mr. Chairman, so, so why should I, can I, can I speak with you for a minute? No, we, we didn't.
Oh, additional communication, all right.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I, and I communicated some of, some of my constituents, I guess I would say concerns, using another word. I know there was some challenges with the transition over in the new routes and the new terminal.
Yes, sir.
Well, we, how do you feel? We have, we are now almost two weeks into this new, into new transportation zone.
So, one of the things we did, we thank you for the, the time to share with you what we had. We did have challenges moving into a new system, after transitioning the system after 31 years at another location and over 25 years of our old routes. It was a challenge for some of our constituents to actually understand the new system. We did go out and do over 100 public meetings over the last two years to try to get the information out. Several residents decided not to show those meetings, so they were a little confused on day, day one. So, one of the things that we did do is we had customer service forms available for the ones that did not understand. Overall, from online concerns to reading concerns there at the terminal, we received 101. At this point in time, out of the 101 concerns, we had 89 addressed in our new schedule adjustments. We still have nine concerns that are just laying out there that we have not made adjustments to. And most of those deal with the Broadmoor Library and also a few in your area, which is the Mayfair, off of Mayfair, which the bus never served anyway. And then we have additional three for additional service that they're requesting and new service in the future. So, that's where we stand at this point.
And in your
One of the things I'll pass to the council clerk.
This is a copy of the notice of schedule changes that was posted. One of the things that we did was based on the concerns of citizens, we have already made schedule adjustments within two weeks. It states by route what schedule, what schedule adjustment we made. If some's complaining that we didn't get to work on time, whatever that complaint may have been, we did look at how we could readjust schedules to make that effective for those riders. Now, mind you, we had to make the decisions based on the mass, not just based on one or two complaints. We had to look at the overall situation because we're carrying more than just one pasture. We can make a change for one that considers, that messes up change for another 20. So, we based on the complaints, what people put in writing to us to make our decision on how we made the effective schedule changes. But that is all listed out before you. One of the areas, one of the, a couple of things in your district, Councilman Bradford, has been the neighborhood circulator. A lot of your constituents did not understand the neighborhood circulator. We have made that adjustment. Also, our night and Sunday route did not serve Grimmet Drive area as part of this new schedule adjustment. Grimmet Drive has now been served and that schedule adjustment has been made.
Yeah. I, I noticed you made some modifications regarding, regarding some of the, some of the complaints and concerns that was given you. Did you have a, how did you communicate? Did you have a hotline, a complaint hotline or any, well, how did you get most of your
So, most of ours is as you come through the terminal, we did have staff, including myself, was there the first week of service during that free drive week. We all had forms. If anyone had a concern or complaint, we asked them to write it down because, you know, we had so many masses coming at us. So, what we asked, you know, the way we can remember your complaints, please write this down, turn this in to our, to our customer service desk, or give it back to one of the staff members that was on site that day. And we took all those and our planning department went through them and we saw what we could do, what we could not do. But everyone that's in this stack has been reached out to, to tell if we were gonna make the change now, if we're gonna make the change later. So, at this point in time, one of the, the nice ladies I actually even this morning, Ms. Cooper, Councilman Fleury actually referenced that she had some concerns. And I personally spent about an hour and a half with her this morning, riding around, driving routes, and trying to make sure she understood the new system, understood the new schedule booklet. So, you know, we are hands-on. We're trying to be good serving leaders as the mayor has asked us to be and making sure that the citizens know that we have their back and that we're gonna make the changes necessary to make the adjustments that are needed. One of the things I do want to make sure we reference that all these changes were based on a study of an organization that goes around, looked at routes all across the country and making our transit system better. So, you know, there are certain things that work other places that may not work here. So, we looked at that as we made our schedule adjustments and tried to make sure that we held those in a, in high level as we go forward in, in adjusting the system. But overall, based on, you know, I was there again this morning and one of the things that I'll tell you, based on the first day we walked into the facility and everyone was complaining to where we're at at this point, two weeks in, I think is a good point.
Good.
If not, we'll be trying to figure out how we make other adjustments at this point. And we tried to keep you all in the loop as we went forward with those adjustments as well.
And you, and you've done a great job in doing that. And, and like any other instance within the city, our constituents reached out to us as, as their representatives and, and they feel like, you know, and I, you responded to a couple that I forwarded to you.
Correct.
But I got a couple of letters that I'm also forwarding to you. And I, what I want you to do is at least reach, reach out and respond to them and their concern.
If you have, any of you have any information, please share that with us. As long as we can make those adjustments, even know about that information. When you share it with us, then we can go look and see what we can do to make those adjustments.
We try, we try as council to respond and at least bring some degree of, of understanding to the situation.
And if any want to see the complaints And if any of you wanna see the complaints or the files that were forwarded to us or information received at the desk, I did bring that with me for today.
Well, we don't need that.
In case you needed that information.
But I just want you to, I'm gonna send you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scan them and I'm gonna send them and, and you, if you will, just call these people and just explain to them what, what their concerns are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Captain Coleman?
The new route to the port, is, is it operating now?
The new route to the port is now operating.
At, at our next meeting, our first meeting in December, would you just give us a little quick update about that, what ridership you're seeing? I know it's still early on.
It's still very early on and actually as of yesterday, the, the port actually asked us to make some changes to that route for ventiler still. They didn't, originally they did not include ventiler still in that, that initial proposal because they only had three riders based on all three shifts that they operate. Uh, one of the things now that they are looking at is making a change because since the original survey, they've added a hundred and fifty temp employees. So we're looking at how we may have to make a readjustment for the port route.
We'll put that update up till January.
Thank you all.
Ms. Cooper, welcome to the Shreveport City Council. You come for, your turn to speak.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
State your name and address and you have three minutes.
Greetings, I'm Elastor Jackson Cooper, 719 Edward Street, apartment 412, 71101, immediately across the street from the old terminal. Like to share with you that since I moved here in 2011, the Shreveport Transit System has worked exceptionally well for me. Were that not the case, I would have had to go back to Tulsa where I could move around. I've ridden through the years and called in many compliments concerning the system. I must admit that when this new proposal came out, I did not pay attention as I should have, or I would not be at this point. Well, Ms. Cooper, what is it that you're asking of the council? Because the Sport Trend is operated by a corporation that has subcontracted from the city, Mr. Chairman, Mr. District B, where I am. I'm asking you to give additional concern to we, the passengers, even though we did not follow through as we should have. I'm asking for another open dialogue between especially the public riders and the corporation in a language that is suitable for the passengers, not for the corporation. And if you would just help us, this has been very frustrating for me. At one time before today, I considered myself a very intelligent person. I do not, after looking at this, I'm, Mr. Washington has been more than considerate and more than helpful and I am yet frustrated. So I know that most of the other passengers are, I'm asking for another dialogue and possibly a survey, but I'm confident that Mr. Washington will work with us again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
If I could, I appreciate you coming down, Elastor, and we will continue to dialogue with Sport Trend. They have been, as partner agencies go, one of the most responsive and, you know, they've been very sensitive to this change. They know it's the first time we've done a change this major in a long time and we will continue working with them to see, you know, what improvements we can do both in terms of communication, relaying those changes to the, to the riders and, you know, whatever else we may be able to effectively communicate to improve the experience, but we'll work with them on that.
Ms. Trahan? Susan?
My name is Susan Trahan and I live in District D and my address is 257 Schaub Drive. We've had quite a day today. I know all of you are real tired, but I couldn't not thank you for your attention for TNR, trap, neuter, and, and release, not release, but return. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. We have been talking to the Cato Commission and y'all have made it possible for us to have a trial run and thank you for your affirmative belief in, in us. The ladies that were here earlier are very devoted to make this work. This, the TNR is not really about cats and feline, it's about people. And it is the solution to our feline overpopulation. Overpopulation of feline causes a divide among cat lovers and cat haters in our neighborhood. And this is a solution to our problem. Cato Parish Animal Control, AKA CPAS, solution to feline overpopulation is euthanasia and that is a Band-Aid. It's not a solution. It's a cure, not a prevention. And TNR is proven all over the nation to work. Alley Cats came here and gave us a, a workshop and several people, I think there were about fifty people came, and they showed us that it works nationally, not just in small communities, but in large cities also. It's an ongoing, this overpopulation of our animals is a malady and it is abuse of our animals here in our community. It's, it's a long time coming and TNR is a manly super tool in the toolbox and we want to give it our best shot to make it work. So y'all have made it possible and we are forever indebted. The Cato Parish citizens, all of the ones that will be working TNR and the ones that supported in the neighborhood will be knocking on doors and we, I want, we want to thank the champions of this movement and Councilman Everson and Jenkins and our champion, I just looked at the clock and lost my mind, Council Commissioner Lynn have devoted their time and efforts to this cause and, and we really appreciate it. We're looking forward, we're inspired and again, thank you so much.
Sammy Mears?
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101, apartment M110. Starting tomorrow, November the 29th, December 6th, and December 13th, Church of the Holy Cross will start their three-week Advent soup lunch with dessert, ice water, and coffee for $4 at 11:00 a.m. And I know that some of you have been there before, some of you haven't yet, but it would be good to see that anyone who has the time to come out from their work schedule, come to the Church of the Holy Cross for a good soup, dessert, ice water, and coffee together. It's $4, you don't wanna miss it. I know a few of you have been there, hope to see you again. Please come and enjoy a really good, great time. I know that I will because I'm going to be there tomorrow. There's no way you could ever pass up a good soup lunch for $4 with dessert, ice water, and coffee. It's all yummy. I have seen a few of you there, like I said, it doesn't take away all that much time for you to come from your work schedule and I know that you'll really enjoy a good soup lunch and you'll have the opportunity to be glad that you did. So if you'll do this, in case if you haven't, it'd be very much appreciated. And November 29th, December 6th, and 13th, it will start. And I was glad to get out today because I was watching one of my programs as of yesterday and even one today. And when I found out that, since the lady's name is Lester, I think that I was watching where Grady answered the door on Sanford and Son and Grady said, hi Lester, and she said Esther, no L. He said, oh, well Merry Christmas to you too.
Ken Creff?
Ken Creff, 157 Archer, Shreveport, 71105. And we did have a Bobby Joe Cooper on the council at one time from Mr. Bradford's district. Okay, I gotta do my numbers. Nineteenth, okay, thank you to Jackie Lansdale, Louisiana Federation of Teachers and school employees for inviting me to honor them and recite "I Have a Dream" at the convention center, uh, Sunday a week ago. Standing ovation, really, really inspiring words for young people to listen to the message of nonviolence. Okay, twenty-one. On the 21st of this month, a hundred and two-year-old lady, born in Shreveport, Claire Roebauer, passed away in Mandeville, just, and, and dear to me because her son Leonard hosted my wife and I's wedding reception. Okay, twenty-two. Okay, y'all kinda got first big test of the UDC and it brought me back to 1987, to thirty years ago, when Broadmoor Neighborhood Association was formed to oppose the thirties liquor at Uri and Stradford, which was supposed to destroy the neighborhood, destroy home values, and thirty years later, we're doing great. But I just point that out, that the organization lost that battle, but it's still around. And you can reverse sometimes, you can make a decision, and I'm thinking when the Saints scored to go ahead of the Colts, 22-17, third quarter, Super Bowl XLIV, two-point conversion, the Lance Moore, and didn't get it. And he, and he goes up to Coach Peyton and he says, the ball crossed the plane, Sean throws a red flag. They overturned it, so you can go back and reverse things, might have to throw a red flag. And I'd love to come back soon, maybe next month, whenever your meeting is, and do a little night for Christmas. I offered that to Shelley a little while ago for the movies on Friday night. Now my main topics, next month is great for the city and sales tax because Christmas being a Monday is the best because you have four weekends before Christmas, twelve of the twenty-four days before Christmas are Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And if you track like I do and I'm sure nobody else does, those are the best months for sales tax revenues. You've got five Fridays, five Saturdays, and five Sundays next month. And if the Citizens Bond Committee gets formed, two considerations, which haven't been previously done since thirty-seven years, a bond of some small millage, let the people have a say on equipment, dump trucks, police cars, fire trucks, rolling stock, gradealls. We really need to, to invest in ourselves and equipment. The other thing is invest in our buildings. So I would, I would put that separate, but a leaky roof turns an asset, a fire station, a park, it turns it into a liability, a convention center, when, when water starts leaking through the roof. So I went to the aquarium today, it's great, I really enjoyed it and hope to be working with those folks to do a few restations there and of course, I'm not gonna charge a fee. And 11 o'clock, Sammy, does not interfere with my retirement schedule.
Thank you. Councilman Bradford?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, while I'm here, I, I want to exhort the administration, you responded to a service request I, I submitted at least three weeks ago on Hannah at Audrey Lane, a water leak, the leak has been repaired, but the road had not been repaired. And Reverend Holmes called me this morning and said that there was almost an accident because there's a, there's a, where the water leak was on Hannah at the end by, by Audrey, that someone was trying to turn right into Audrey, someone was going and it was enough, not enough room. So he cautioned that we need to get that addressed.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Is there any other business for the council?
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn, yesterday at the council meeting, one of the council members, I think it was Councilman Jenkins, asked about the parish millage possibly going up in 2018. Mayor had me research that. The Assistant Administrator Randy Lucky contacted me today and said that their plan is to have one of their millages that expires next year, their Parks and Recreation Millage, on the ballot in November of 2018 and their other three separate millages would only come up in the preceding years as they are set to expire. So we should be on the ballot solo in April.